It's all standing to the flag of the United States of America, through the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I appreciate everybody being here. So we're going to go ahead and let you, Dan, go ahead and get started in the continuation of your meeting and everything. If you want to go ahead and, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Good evening, council members. My name's Dan Watson. I live at 8404 Avaley Manor Lane. Thank you very much for inviting me here tonight to complete the presentation in connection with Petition 2101 that was filed back on May the 7th, more than seven months ago. This presentation began two months ago, on October 12th, but will be concluded tonight. Unlike the October meeting, Mr. Thomas and staff and I were able to meet and advance and communicate about ground rules, and that should make the evening go much more smoothly, and I hope not to use the full amount of time that was allotted. Not only to speed things up, but also to help make clear the points I'll be conveying tonight, I delivered to each of you almost two weeks ago, a 15-page preview of this presentation, together with about 50 documents that substantiate the claims I'm making tonight. While I alone am responsible for my remarks tonight, I also want to remind everyone that Mrs. Moran's roster shows that you all have received emails from over 412 other citizens at this point, it was 350 two months ago, to join in or express support for Petition 2101. And I'm really speaking for them also. That number is over 1.4% of the adult population of Talbot County, and the generally accepted ratio of people who write in on an issue compared to those who are engaged but just don't take that steps, about 10 to 1. So you're all, you're looking at something in the order of magnitude of 15% of the people in Talbot County who are already focused on this issue before tonight's disclosures. I'm sure there'll be more. Resolution 281 that you adopted on August 11th, 2020, nine months after it was introduced, was the county's one and only opportunity to influence the biggest project ever to happen in Talbot County. In adopting Resolution 281, you may hear me refer to it as R281, you gave an unconditional green light to Lakeside, the 2,500-home subdivision and half a million square feet of retail space on the opposite side of Route 50 from the historic little town of Trap. The petition filed on May the 7th, two months before any ship sailed or horse left the barn, was to urge you to rescind that action so that before the county had had time for, so that the county had time, to answer important questions before construction of Lakeside got underway. The idea is that after we all learned what is really going on, the project could come back and be considered anew by the community. I'm here tonight, the reason I'm here tonight is to present you with new information that you, the planning commission, the public, did not have during consideration of Resolution 281, or in August 2020 when you adopted it. Based on this new information, I believe you will agree that the only proper course is rescission of Resolution 281. Not to kill Lakeside, but so that the applicant can bring it back again in a proper context, untainted by falsehoods and misrepresentations. A point that needs to, needs making right up front is this. The county's authorization for Lakeside to proceed, proceed is a land use decision. It's a land use decision if ever there was one. Probably the most important land use decision ever made in Talbot County. It is not somehow an esoteric technical matter having to do with wastewater science. That is why these basic decisions about Lakeside, including rescission, is your responsibility and not the Maryland Department of Environment's or MDE's. Under Maryland law, land use decisions are the purview of county government. There is no question that you, comprised the county council, have the authority to rescind 281, particularly based on new information that affects public health of your constituents as discussed on October 12th, or new information I will present tonight showing how the applicant corrupted the county's land use review process with falsehood and misrepresentation. Not only is your right to rescind, is, not only is your right to rescind unconstrained, but in the context of information you heard on October the 12th bearing on a threat to public health, it is clearly your responsibility as well. You are our Board of Health. Under your rules, I am here to state my case, so I would like to ask that you hold any questions until I've finished laying out the whole story. That will be both the fastest and clearest route, and I'm happy to take questions and have a general discussion at the end if you like. These remarks are structured into four parts. First, some perspective on where we are, then presentation of my central argument, that falsehoods and misrepresentations corrupted a proper consideration of Resolution 281, followed by evidence, indeed, I think, proof of backing up my points, and finally, just a few concluding remarks. On December 1st, a couple of weeks ago, I delivered to MDE and others, including the Attorney's General's Office and EPA, and yourselves, a 15-page letter, replete with footnotes and some 55 exhibits in that document, to express as clearly as I'm able the points I will be making here tonight. Some other documents obtained through PIA requests since December 1st further substantiate these claims. Exhibit 2 of the letter to MDE is especially important, as it defines what I mean by that obviously harsh word falsehood, which I will use a lot here tonight. I'm not a reckless man, and I know I am making very serious allegations, that the review and the approval process of Lakeside culminating in approval of Resolution 281 last August was corrupted by falsehoods. That is, facts were presented as true that were untrue. I would like to read a bit of what I said in that letter to MDE on this important point, and ask anyone who's concerned about what I'm saying, this word falsehood and so forth, to read all of Exhibit 2. This is part of what I wrote. These terms falsehood, false, untrue, are used throughout these materials, sometimes awkwardly, to mean there is very compelling evidence that strongly suggests a statement or purported fact is not true, and I set forth my evidence for that claim. But other, as yet undiscovered, evidence might have a bearing on the actual truth or falseness of a fact, of course. My characterization is not absolutely conclusive, which is why a professional investigation is appropriate. Falsheids can be simple, genuine, innocent mistakes. It happens all the time. It's still a falsehood. Falsheed can arise from a listener drawing a logical but wrong inference from facts said by a speaker because other facts were not known to that listener. A falsehood can arise from simple omission of a material fact. There's a reason, an oath, that, an oath is a promise to tell the whole truth. Falsheids arise from confusion, and falsehoods can be purposeful lies, bold or subtle. Falsheids can be created or perpetuated over time simply because of people's faulty memories, where part of the story is remembered but part of it's forgotten, and so on. Because Dan Watson has no way to differentiate, or know, or prove the reasons behind any falsehood, and as I have no intention to state or imply the motive, the purposefulness, the innocence, or the reason for any, that any falsehood arose, the terminology falsehood will just have to do. So to the point, why must Resolution 281 be rescinded? Resolution 281 must be reversed and rescinded because its approval was based on the false pretenses of misrepresentations. I'm going to lay that all out for you, that's why I'm here tonight, and it's very troubling. But first, it's necessary to back up a moment. And Ms. Moran, if you could put up the first slide, please?
Oh, there's the, this one, the next one?
Yes, this one, thanks. The first, here you will recognize the slide that I put up on October 12th, it's the same one, and it lists five independent reasons that, why Resolution 281 must be rescinded. Each one, standing alone, would be reason enough to rescind 281. The first item is a big deal, and it was the only one that I was able to present on October the 12th. Severe pollution in La Trap Creek caused by problems and deficiencies with the existing Trap wastewater treatment plant. You all remember the photos. Incredibly enough, Resolution 281 that you adopted permits Lakeside to connect 120 homes and possibly many more to that system, not only polluting our waters, but contributing more to an existing public health hazard, as you heard. This first issue was not first because I think it is the most important and most outrageous, but only because it was the most obvious. It is the one that everybody in Talbot County knows about and are rightly outraged about. It's the one that's easiest to understand, and the outrage is captured in photographs. The issue of falsehoods and misrepresentations presenting here tonight, I think, is a more serious form of pollution, but there are no photographs. Everyone should know this, too. Among the people who heard the information presented about the existing plant in La Trap Creek on October 12th were our planning commissioners. They too heard Matt Pluta, the Chop Tank Riverkeeper, as he delivered independent lab reports showing that every day that plant puts out effluent at 13 times, not double or triple, but 13 times, the nitrogen concentration as a modern plant. And the Maryland Department of Environment somehow says that's fine because remarkably, in 2019, they gave Trap a discharge permit that has no nitrogen limits in it at all. Worse, Shore Rivers Lab Reports, you'll remember, showed that E. coli and fecal coliform in the little stream just below the Trap plant, where sludge hasn't been removed in over 20 years, is more than 10 times greater than this, than the state of Maryland's safe limit. Tom Hughes, who you know, just got written confirmation from MDE this week, that it has not monitored conditions in La Trap Creek for at least five years, which is their requirement, and we think probably not since 1998. And where's the Department of Natural Resources in all this, by the way? DNR. You council members and the planning commissioners also heard Dr. Smullen detail a litany of severe problems with the Trap plant, not just with the treatment plant itself, but with terrible inflow and infiltration problems in its collection system, that occur even with normal rainfall, not just extreme rainfall. Yet Resolution 281 permits Lakeside to connect to that system. As the council knows, but I do not believe has yet reported to the Maryland Department of Environment, on November the 3rd, after hearing the testimony of Mr. Pluta and Dr. Smullen and others, the planning commission reconsidered its earlier vote and formally determined that connecting Lakeside to the existing Trap sewer system, as Resolution 281 permits, cannot be allowed. It is in fact inconsistent, inconsistent with the Talbot County Comprehensive Plan until such time as the Trap Plant meets enhanced nutrient removal standards, ENR standards. So let me say that again. The planning commission has found that a central element of Resolution 281 is inconsistent with the comp plan. Consequently, as a legal proposition, I believe you are compelled to rescind 281, or MDE itself must reverse its earlier approval of Resolution 281. It's a public health matter. I want to acknowledge and salute Mrs. Price's effort to face up to this particular problem by drafting a resolution that is intended to be a compromise, and I understand may be introduced tomorrow night. But if I understand correctly that it still permits Lakeside to connect and tries only to limit the duration of the harm, I don't think it's adequate and does not address at all the legal consequences of the planning commission's decisions. So all of that had to do with the first reason to rescind 281, and standing alone, it's, it requires its rescission. Looking back at the slide, the second item, which I am not going to get into the, into, deals with the plans for the new wastewater treatment plant proposed for Lakeside on the east side of Route 50. As you know, six weeks ago, on October 28th, about 200 citizens of Talbot County were at the community center, as were some of you, offering comments and criticisms of various aspects of that plan, with not a single speaker endorsing it. Dr. Smullen and Mr. Pluta and others knowledgeable technically spoke on technical issues. Until the results of that MDE review process are known, the county cannot judge whether or not the system contemplated supports or erodes our comprehensive plan, and that is not a concern of MDE's. MDE is not looking at that system with respect to our comprehensive plan. The planning commission does that. Could we put up the next slide? Okay. The third item that was listed on that slide is a fundamental legal problem with Resolution 281 that I'm also not going to get into depth here tonight. That legal problem, which went somehow unnoticed, deals with the fact that Resolution 281 made dramatic changes to the properties around Trap, around Trap, that were not called out in the title of 281, or the text of 281, that were not, are not owned by the developer, that are not part of Lakeside, and were never discussed or reviewed by the planning commission, by the public, or by you, the county council. But the changes were made, reclassified, mapped in our county's legal document. I'm not going to review this slide, but I put it up here just to illustrate the breadth and variety of properties around Trap that are impacted by this problem. This isn't just a little, one little lot that was mislured. Each one of these circles, which are, this is two different maps of Trap. On the left is the sewer service map, and on the right is the long-range planning sewer service map, both of which are relevant, both of which had many errors. Each one of these is a parcel of land, or a group of parcels of land, that were reclassified and remapped by Resolution 281 with no one's knowledge, no one's review, and it affects property interests. This was not some minor administrative glitch, a matter of fixing some typos or an incorrect property line. The issue involves the property rights of all those property owners in the Trap area, helping some of them and hurting most. Most noticeably, it seems to have benefited the developer of Lakeside by downgrading the development potential for other properties that were set to compete with Lakeside if they were developed. In particular, these properties here on the west side of, on the west side of Route 50. This is a serious legal matter, and Resolution 281 must be rescinded until it's straightened out and fixed properly. I'm sure there are many lawyers listening and watching this who recognize the seriousness of this flaw in 281. Many of us laymen wouldn't necessarily grasp it. So this brings us to the fourth and fifth items. The fourth and fifth items together, from this, from the October slide, as you remember, are what I came here to talk about tonight. They are the most difficult to see and the most difficult to understand, but they are the most serious in both a legal and moral sense, because this issue goes directly to the integrity of Talbot County's land review processes, and our, and our reaction to that, those violations of our integrity, will show us who we really are as a county. Because of the fact that the consideration of Resolution 281 from the outset was corrupted by falsehood and misrepresentation, you didn't know that in, that falsehoods and representations that you didn't know in August of 2020, I'm sure you will actually see them clearly at the end, in the end of the night. Before we get into that, I want to talk about, put some perspective on the Lakeside project. Look at it at 100,000-foot level. First, to get an idea of what's, well, to get an idea of what's really going on, Resolution 281 is not just your average comprehensive water and sewer plan amendment like any other. Comprehensive sewer plan amendments been, has, plan has been amended 55 times in Talbot County, seems to come up every week. This is not just your average run-of-the-mill comprehensive water and sewer plan amendment. What is proposed is unprecedented in rural Talbot County. Lakeside is a billion-dollar real estate deal, in a cornfield on the opposite side of the peninsula's busiest highway, from a financially strapped little town, population about 1,000. Now, I'm a former real estate professional and developed a little property myself. I'm a capitalist. There is nothing wrong with a project that makes money, even a project that makes lots and lots of money. We should all be so lucky. But that is if it's done on the up and up. Whether it's golf, or cards, or marriage, or real estate development, cheating poisons everything. So a billion dollars is a lot of money. 2,500 homes, at say $400,000 a pop, is a billion dollars. Plus, there's a half a million square feet of commercial space just to take care of any rounding errors. So let's say a billion. At, at a 10% margin, that would be $100 million in profit, and the real estate brokerage fees would be in the tens of millions. So if any project in this county, or any other county, was to be pursued with tenacity, this is the one. As with the MDE sewage permits you'll be hearing about, Resolution 281 was sponsored by two parties, working together jointly, and that itself is a unique arrangement, which MDE has acknowledged. The two parties are the town of Trap and the developer, Rocks. The little historic town of Trap, for those who don't know, consists of about 340 households, which is the size of a subdivision in most places. In the last town election, 93 voters came out. So 47 people are a majority of the decision-makers in the Democratic town of Trap. The biggest vote ever taken in Trap was the referendum on Lakeside in 2003, where the developer offered the town a number of inducements. If 77 people had voted nay rather than aye, Lakeside wouldn't be on the agenda today, but it is. Trap has never been accused of being a high-income, wealthy community. Rather, it seems made, made up of hard-working, full-time residents, many elderly. For reasons buried in history, residents in Trap suffer financially with enormous water and sewer bills month after month. I mean, big, like $120, $130 a month for a little house owned by an elderly couple. It appears they've had scant help over the years from state and county government, all things considered, to deal with these problems, which stem from, which, these problems stem from costs connected with the Trap sewage system. I, for one, am pretty sympathetic to their plight, about which I knew very little, and I wrote about that in The Spy a couple of weeks ago. So the other co-applicant with the town is the developer, Rocks Engineering, out of Northern Virginia, Vienna, Virginia, and they're doing business in Lakeside as Trap East Holdings Business Trust, and I'll refer to the developer as Rocks. We know the ownership of that project because the developer's attorney in August went to the trouble of releasing an official statement published in the Talbot Spy, under the headline, "Rock's Family Owns and Controls Lakeside Development Project." Rocks attorney did not mention Rowell Engineering, who in the past has been identified in the press in Talbot County as the developer of Lakeside, and who has, in fact, done engineering work on the project for two decades. Rocks has successfully developed, as we know, other property in Talbot County with the help of Rowell Engineering, including the Eastern Club, which wraps around the now abandoned golf course. Rocks has generally remained far behind the scenes, if that name is new to some people. Rocks and the town of Trap have an additional and very different relationship in addition to being co-applicants and de facto partners in obtaining the MDE permits and the Talbot County approvals. One is supposed to regulate the other. The government body in which a developer, in which development occurs is the regulator, the overseer, the inspector of what goes on, and that's the case in Lakeside. Trap has all the same powers. Mr. Pack, you talked about Trap as a, as a recognized municipal body with the same sovereignty as, as others, and that's exactly right. Trap has all the same powers as the city of Rockville, or Hagerstown, or the city of Annapolis, except in this case, due to the imbalance of power and the reality of the situation, is not the little town of Trap and its 93 voters inevitably in the thrall of this developer, any developer who would have a project this size. Usually in these deals, from my life experience, there's another important party, the mortgagee or bank or insurance company, an institution, whose money backs the developer, and therefore has a lot of influence, and sees that all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed, and that things are done properly by the book. When the Rowell's company built Columbia 50 years ago, it was Connecticut Mutual, for example. But in this case, surprisingly, there is no mortgage on Lake, on the Lakeside property at all. So that normal guardrail is missing. The last point I want to make about the perspective of Lakeside at the 100,000-foot level is this. Lakeside has been on the radio, radar of Talbot County since 2003. Everybody in Talbot County knows about Lakeside, or thinks they do, recalls the newspaper articles and hoopla way back when, saw, saw the weather beaten sign forever. All, all of that left a very strong impression that Lakeside had been ready to go before the Great Recession hit, and it was just put on hold indefinitely. So with that background, billion dollars in a cornfield, a financially squeezed little town in the hands of an experienced developer, old vague recollections from the past, what could go wrong? So now, let's talk about what Resolution 281 is and what it did. It's the topic at hand. Rocks and the town requested the county to adopt Resolution 281 to get the county's comprehensive water and sewer plan amended, so that Lakeside would have a so-called S1, or immediate priority sewer service classification. Because without it, Lakeside is not legally entitled to get any permits from MDE for sewage facility. It's that simple. The chief purpose of Resolution 281, the main objective, was to get designated S1. But while pursuing that status, the applicant slipped in another thing, too. You see, when Resolution 281 was first submitted to the council in December of 2019, when it first came up, reclassification was its only purpose. And at that time, the language in Exhibit F to Resolution 281, the language in Exhibit F explicitly said Lakeside could not connect to the existing Trap plant. Think about that. The sentence in the original Exhibit F read, "No wastewater capacity of the existing Trap District wastewater plant," that is, the existing old plant, "no wastewater capacity of the existing Trap wastewater treatment plant will be allocated to serve the Trap East Sewer District." That's Lakeside. No wastewater capacity of the existing-
Real quick, do you have one, do you have that one as one of your, you have all the exhibits here?
Yes, that is-
What you're reading is which one?
That is, I'm going to mention what Exhibit that is in a minute.
Thank you.
It, it is in there. It's on page, let me remember, it would be on page 47, I think, of the comp, comp plan. "No wastewater capacity of the existing Trap District wastewater treatment plant will be allocated to serve the Trap East Sewer District." But that was in December. Two months later, when Rocks agreed to ass- Two months later, when Rocks agreed to a so-called concession to split Lakeside into two phases, the amendment of Resolution 281 also slipped in, a new Exhibit F, that reversed the idea I just expressed, reversed it a hundred-and-eighty degrees, and permitted Rocks to connect Lakeside's first hundred-and-twenty homes, and it could be more, to the deficient plant. Now, I use the word slipped in, we know it's, has connotations. I use the word slipped in because the transcripts of council meetings and planning commission meetings, the transcripts show that no one on the council, no council member or planning commission member ever once spoke of that remarkable one-hundred-and-eighty-degree reversal, reversal. And I believe no one realized that it, there had ever been a change. I think everyone thought the amendment that they were looking at, had, had always been there since December. It, that's, it was, it had not been. Because, and only because of the successful and largely unnoticed substitution, I think completely unnoticed substitution of Exhibit F, Rocks can and is building Lakeside right now, even though it will be months until the MDE even acts on the permit for the new plant. Had Exhibit F not been substituted unnoticed, Rocks could not connect Lakeside to the existing plant, and I believe would not have been moving forward today. Adding insult to injury, even though the planning commission, even though the planning commission on November third formally determined that connecting Lakeside to the old plant is inconsistent with the county comprehensive plan, Rocks went ahead anyway and laid the pipe, made the connection, after November third. Rocks is in a hurry, and perhaps not a thing stands in the way of his, of that company selling the first house tomorrow, building it next month, and adding its sewage to the sewage flowing into the La Trap Creek by Valentine's Day. It's all regulated only by the Town of Trap, you see.
Mr. Watson, when you said November, you said, just past November?
Five weeks ago.
Yeah, I was just gonna make sure.
So all of this is what I'm calling the other thing, besides the classification of S1.
I'd still like to see where Exhibit F is. You haven't gotten there yet. I'd just like to see it here, too.
I'm sorry, didn't-
The original Exhibit F, I'd like, I just wish you could tell me which one of your sixty exhibits it is, please.
Uh, my hearing-
It, it's seven B, it's labeled forty-three and forty-seven in the, in grant list, and it includes that map that he was referencing that we didn't discuss.
Thank you.
I need to clarify, I need to clarify something. What I put into, and this could be very misleading, it's important we, I stop. What I put into the packet, because I referred to it in my letter to MDE and referred to it, I will be referring to it here tonight, or the, um, is, or the pages from, um, the comprehensive water and sewer plan that are, that may be the very pages from exhibit, from, from the amended exhibit, uh, the, the amended Exhibit F, that is, the comprehensive water and sewer plan that was actually enacted. I assure you I have, and Mrs. Moran has, on your server, and I'm sure, frankly, you have on your computers buried somewhere, the original Resolution 281, um, with the original exhibit, and, um, as soon as this meeting's over, I will provide it to you. And I'm sorry, I didn't think to have that item in your package, because it, I didn't, it didn't occur to me that, that it wasn't there.
It would be nice to compare the two.
Pardon me?
It would be nice to compare the two.
Yes, of course.
Thank you.
That's the entire point, indeed. And, um, and I apologize for that oversight. The sentence I read to you is the sentence that you will find in the document I sent you. So that whole issue is the other thing, because the main, uh, the main circus tent is obtaining, uh, the resolution, uh, I mean, the classification S1. Because without that, without obtaining a classification as S1, a subdivision, um, the subdivision of Lakeside could not get underway, it's the sine qua non, as they say. Well, Rocks and the town did get Resolution 281 adopted, of course, and it got its S1 classification, but it, uh, it did so only based on falsehood and misrepresentation, as I will show you. To see why these falsehoods matter, one must know these key points, which every one on the council understands, but not, uh, not necessarily everybody else. For the, for the Talbot County Council to legally reclassify a property, the county planning commission must have formally determined that the reclassification is consistent with the county's comprehensive plan. The planning commission must take into account seven discrete issues, as defined by law, that really comprise the whole comprehensive plan, and it's serious business. Before the, and, second item is, before the planning commission can make that determination, planning commission must hold a plant, a, a public hearing, where the public can address the planning commission, and the public's comments are intended to cover the entire breadth of the amendment's impact on the community. All of the matters covered in the comprehensive plan, and the seven areas that are almost always discussed, discussed and detailed by the commission, it's all in play. As you'll see, this is where, in the case of Resolution 281, Talbot County's land use review process was corrupted, because the applicant of 281 presented it to the planning commissioners, to the public, and to you and the council, under the guise of false pretenses. As you will see, the citizens of Talbot County, and the planning commission, too, were denied an honest, untainted framework for decision-making. So now let me describe the, what I'm talking about, those falsehoods. The first falsehood was that in 2002, Talbot County gave the Lakeside property a sewer service priority classification of S2, which means that the land is expected to be developed in three to five years. In presenting Resolution 281, not only was the, were the implications obvious, but Rocks' attorney said it directly to you and to the planning commission, as you'll hear when I read from the transcripts. Almost two, almost two decades ago, this was the assertion, almost two decades ago, Talbot County had officially said that by 2007 or so, Rocks should be entitled to develop Lakeside, all twenty-five-hundred-and-one homes, the half a million feet of retail, just as it wanted to, all in one fell swoop. That's what we were led to believe. But it was not true. The property had never been classified S2 in 2002, or at any time, and in fact, had never been given any priority classification at all. Exactly contract, contrary to what S2 classification implied, Talbot County never said the property should be developed at all, and certainly not at a scale and at a pace of this subdivision, notwithstanding that Trap and Rocks were all for it. Evidence of this, indeed proof, will be presented shortly. But this F2, S2 falsehood, I call it the S2 falsehood, that almost twenty years ago, Talbot County had formally agreed it would, that Lakeside should be developed in three to five years, was front and center in 2020 to the council, to the planning commission, and to the public. When Resolution 281 was introduced the very first time, Mr. Pack, of course, asked Ms. Moran to read the title of the resolution, and the falsehood was right there instantly. The title to Resolution 20, uh, Resolution 281 includes these words, "To reclassify and remap the Lakeside property from S2, areas where sanitary improvements are programmed for progress within three to five years, to S1." And those words are included in the text also. What could be more clear? If Lakeside was classified for development in three to five years, and it's been around essentially since the turn of the millennium, then my God, obviously, it's time to get this thing going. That falsehood, that the property was classified for development in three to five years, was not new. In fact, that was a big part of the problem. That untruth had been around for years and years, at least since 2004, and it had been repeated and repeated so many times, in so many contexts, by so many people, that understandably, the people not in the know were easily duped, including you and the council, and the planning commissioners, and all of the public. But the fact that the falsehood is old, and it's been around forever, and has been repeated for years, does not make it somehow true, of course not. I now want to read you quotes from, from the transcripts of council meetings and planning commission meetings, uh, that show how this falsehood was emphasized again, again, and again in the 2020 review process, that Lakeside was S2, and had always been programmed for development in three to five years. And it shows how, how Resolution 281 was framed and corrupted, uh, in, in that process. Everybody should recall that the complete transcripts of all of these meetings, um, the sections pertaining to, everything pertaining to Lakeside, are in the packets that I sent you. So this is not, uh, if you, anybody wants to double-check or see the context, it's all there for you. Let's begin. Mr. Showalter, on the first night, he represents Rocks Development, uh, Mr. Showalter, on the first night the Resolution 281 was, uh, was discussed substantively, led off with the S2 falsehood, and it framed the whole review from that moment-
Date of which meeting? Just, just give us the date of the meeting that you're going from.
Uh, this was, uh, the May twentieth meeting, uh, May twenty twenty, May twenty, twenty And all these quotes can be matched up, not instantly, I don't have, I didn't organize it that way, but, uh, they're, they can be, they can be matched up. And I'm, I'm around to do that for you, um, if there's any confusion. So Mr. Showalter left off, uh, led off with the S2 falsehood, and it framed the whole review from that moment till August eleventh, when it was adopted. This is what he said to you. "The current county comprehensive water and sewer plan, most recently adopted with respect to this project in 2002, includes the entirety of this project as S2/W2 area." References at the W2 is the Water Service, I'm gonna skip over W2 usually, it's the same thing, it's always S2/W2. "The current county comprehensive water and sewer plan, most recently adopted with respect to this project in 2002, includes the entirety of this project as S2, which indicates that water and sewer infrastructure was anticipated to be extended to serve this development within three to five years of adoption of that plan." So in 2005 to 2007 timeframe, we're now almost sixteen years beyond that, and the first pipe has not been put into the ground. Later, that was the very beginning of the first substantive discussion. Later, Mr. Showalter explained the so-called concession Rocks was willing to offer. Uh, Ms. Price, I, I was mistaken, that was the, um, I now see the concession, that was the February eleventh, uh, first meeting in front of the council, not the planning commission. These are from the council meetings. Later, Mr. Showalter explained a so-called concession Rocks was willing to offer, just to get things moving. He'd split Lakeside into two phases, and the county would only have to designate the northern portion as S1. Rocks would agree to, to leave the southern part as S2. But of course, that was false, because not a Lakeside had ever been S2. That southern portion, in fact, was unprogrammed. But this is what Mr. Showalter said. "There is an amendment that would move a portion, essentially the northern half of the project, from S2, and would retain S2 designation of the southern half. From the MDE's perspective, the project is consistent with your current plan, because we're more than fifteen years beyond the timeframe when infrastructure was proposed to be connected." Remember that reference to MDE, because that plays directly into the second falsehood, and shows how deeply these things were intertwined. In the next quote, the county engineer did not create, but just reinforced, uh, the falsehood when he reported something about MDE. He reported MDE's position, and he said this, "And ultimately, MDE's position was that the passage of time, since roughly about 2008 to today, was, I guess, the time that it took, that the current classification of the county, that wa, in the county, that was S2, which is future planning within three to five years, they felt like it's past twelve years, and now it's classified S1." Mr. Clark was reporting to you as a fact that MDE not only knew the property had been S2 for eighteen years, which it was not, uh, but for their own part, MDE determined that the passage of time had already somehow transformed Lakeside to S1 status, a transsubstantiation of some sort. The same idea was repeated more than once to you and to the planning commissioners, too. You will hear evidence that the falsehoods, that the property was S2, was accepted and believed by all commissioners and county council persons, and the report that MDE was indeed interpreting Lakeside already to be classified S1 and eligible for immediate development was also accepted. How could it be otherwise, since MDE issued the permits, and yet the county council members knew the county had never classified Lakeside as S1, even if it had been S2? At least Mr. Lesher was skeptical of MDE's right to do that, what Mr. Clark said, as his comment to Mr. Clark was this. "Mr. Lesher, that's kind of new to me. Is there any provision in law where this change of status, of, for this change of status without legislative action?" And Mr. Lesher was the only one on the council to vote against Resolution 281. Emphasizing the solidity of the falsehood, Mr. Clark explained that Rocks, explained Rocks' concession, as it was perceived, meant that the southern half of Lakeside would remain S2, when it, in fact, it had never been classified that. His exact words are these. "Everything south of that red line would actually remain as the future planning sta, status for three to five years, and, for development in three to five years for water service." Now listen to this one. This is from the July twenty-first, 2020, um, public hearing, uh, in this room, for you. This is Mr. Showalter explaining to you, and to the staff, and to the public, why Resolution 281 should be adopted. These were his words. "The plan adopted in 2002 with respect to its maps designated the entirety of this project as S2, which meant that it was indeed to be served by public water and sewer within the period of 2005 to 2008. Twelve to fifteen years beyond that is where we are today. Infrastructure hasn't been constructed, and from MDE's perspective, consistency with the county comprehensive water and sewer plans looks at timing. And so we're twelve years beyond the timeframe that was programmed by the, by the county to be served for infrastructure. It's determined to be consistent with the county's plans." So now, not only does he represent the longstanding falsehood that Lakeside was classified S2 in 2002, when it was not, he again reports that MDE interprets the passage of time to have automatically turned it into S1. That's the transsubstantiation again. "At the county council meeting on August eleventh, when you adopted Resolution 281 by a four-to-one vote, Mr. Pack led off the direct, uh, off directly with a discussion of Lakeside's existing sewer classification status, that is, prior to the adoption of Resolution 281. At first, I, for one, thought Mr. Pack had bought Mr. Showalter's claim that MDE had already declared Lakeside to be S1, and was ready for immediate development, whether or not the council acted. This is what was said, Mr. Pack. "Currently, the entire acreage sits at S1, which means the development can take place anywhere on the lot, either the Barber Road side or the Fifty side. I think that the agreement that came out of discussions with the Town of Trap and the developer was to split zoning to allow the first part of the development to stay as S1, and then, once it is developed out, can, the other part can be moved into S2, the S2 side of the lot." Mr., I need to read that again, I'm sorry. "I think that the agreement that came out of discussions with the Town of Trap, and also with the developer, was to do the split zoning, to allow the first part of that development to stay on the-" to stay on the S1 side, and then, once it's developed out, can, the other part can be moved over to the S2 side of the lot. Mr. Pack seemed to have bought the idea that Lakeside was already S1, as Mr. Showalter claimed MDE said, and seemingly corroborated by the fact that MDE had issued permits long ago. Mr. Pack also acknowledged the benefits of Rocks' faux concession. But perhaps the remark was just, indicated confusion, because Mr. Lesher and others promptly corrected you that the property was not S1 per MDE's purported interpretation, but S2. That happened instantly, which itself, of course, is a falsehood, because it wasn't S2. Mr. Pack seemed okay with that, standing corrected, and replied simply, 'Okay, Mr. Showalter, do you want to be heard?'" So let's continue with August 11th meeting. It was not a public hearing, but nevertheless, the developer's lawyer, Mr. Showalter, and only Mr. Showalter, was invited up to speak. And these were his very first words. "Just very briefly, I just want to reiterate that what is proposed before you today, what you're being asked to adopt as an amendment, is an amendment to update your plan, which already reflects this project." Which already reflects this project. There it is. "A few minutes later, you adopted Resolution 281 by a 4-1 vote, relinquishing Talbot County's one and only opportunity to influence Lakeside in any fashion whatsoever. You gave Rocks and the town the S1 classification essential to receiving final MDE permits to get underway. Going forward, Rocks has only the town of Trap and its 93 voters to contend with in making the most out of its 865 acres, a billion-dollar deal if ever I saw one." There's a postscript to these county council transcripts that hints at just how persuasive Mr. Showalter can be. This quote is from not last year, but May 11th of this year, and suggests that perhaps he permanently convinced you, Mr. Pack, that his story was true, and that even without Resolution 281 being adopted, Lakeside had already been classified S1 by MDE and would be developed anyway forthwith, and that splitting the south end into a different phase had, as S2, had been a concession. "On May 11th of this year, when my petition, what we're talking about now, was first introduced, and the county refused to let me speak, you were on the phone and said the following, preemptively objecting to hearing me out. 'Removing 281 and opening up the entire parcel to S1 development zoning is something that I dread. I don't think that is advantageous to us.'" In other words, if Resolution 281 went away, it would revert back the entire thing to being S1. Referring to Resolution 281, you said, "281 split it so that one half will be developed S1, and the back half is S2. To go back to a full-blown, I think 250 acres at S1 is something I would not want to do." All the quotes I've read to you up to now, incidentally, were just from the transcripts of the three council meetings. The planning commission met four times to discuss Lakeside and Resolution 281, and those transcripts are full of similar and often more blatant repetitions of these things, as if they were fact when they were not. It shaped the planning commission's view of Lakeside, as it also reflect, as is also reflected in the transcripts. Given the time constraints, I'm not going to recount, I'm going to recount only a couple of illustrative items. Predictably, Mr. Showalter's first words when asked to present at the commission's first review of amended 281, and that Ms. Price was the May 20th, 2020 meeting. Mr. Showalter's first words were these. "The current county comprehensive water and sewer plan designates the entirety of this property for water and sewer service beginning 2005 to 2008." Later in that session, he said, "MDE, as Mr. Clark indicated, has consistently through the years determined that this area, from their perspective, is considered S1. It's available for immediate infrastructure and construction." Showing Mr. Showalter's persuasiveness to the benefit, as to the benefits of Rocks' concession to split Lakeside into two phases, Commissioner Paul Spies said this. "When this first came up to me, it was first proposed for the whole entire project to go S1, and I think if they pushed hard enough or really wanted to do that and got fed up with the system, they would have the legal groundwork to move the entire property to S1. I think some of the staff that they have given us, some of the stuff they have given us since they first came in front of us has been compromises. So they're getting something, we're getting something." Literally, moments before the commission's final vote on June 10th, Mr. Spies captured the import of the S2 falsehood perfectly when he said, "We're voting, we're voting on a timeframe that in my mind has already been passed." So there you have it. That's what I called the false, the first falsehood. There was a second one. The second falsehood that completely permeated and corrupted an honest consideration of Resolution 281 was that back in the early 2000s, Lakeside had obtained valid legal sewer permits from MDE. And that confirmed in everyone's mind that they had thought, everyone who had thought to even question it, that Lakeside must already have been approved by Talbot County way back then. And that's because you can't get MDE permits unless the county, not the town or the developer, but the county, has approved the project by a formal finding of the planning commission that it is consistent with the comprehensive plan. That's Maryland Code 9-511. So if Lakeside had permits back in the 2000s, and they did, then we as a county must already have looked at it and approved it once before. Resolution 281 is just a cleanup of some kind, and that is false. Here are the facts. MDE did issue Lakeside permits back then, a discharge permit in 2005 and two construction permits in 2006. But in fact, Talbot County never reviewed it at all, had never found it consistent with the comp plan. In fact, quite the opposite. The Talbot County Council had emphatically rejected it, and it refused back then to designate Lakeside S1, immediate priority, which Section 9-511 of the Maryland Environmental Article says is a legal prerequisite to issue permits. Accordingly, the MDE permits Lakeside did in fact obtain had been issued illegally and had been invalid from the outset. That fact, which I will prove to you shortly, was known by almost nobody in Talbot County, not by the public, not by the planning commission, and not by you council members. Nevertheless, that falsehood was woven into consideration of Resolution 281 from start to finish and corrupt, corrupted the whole process. Here's a aside. These are serious charges I'm making, we all know that, about MDE issuing permits illegally. And I'm sure you know that two weeks ago, I sent all this information to Secretary Grumbles asking for an informal investigation, and also sent it to the Attorney General's office and to the EPA in Philadelphia. I've heard from no one yet, of course, but I'm sure we will. Obviously, when Rocks or the town of Trap said that they had long ago obtained their permits from the MDE, they did not go on to explicitly announce that these permits were legal and valid. Who would do that? But of course, that essential idea was unstated and inherent, and it was that essential but unstated idea that it's legal and valid that was the falsehood, which is why you'll never see in the transcript an explicit false claim that the permits were legal and valid. So right after Ms. Moran read into the record the title of Resolution 281 at the first meeting on December 17th, 2019, the title that recited the falsehood about having long ago been programmed S2 for development in three to five years, Mr. Pack, you said this. "The permit that was issued by MDE back in 2004/05 has now since expired. So is MDE treating this as a new application, or are they treating this as an extension of the old application, the old permit?" So yes, everyone paying the least attention to Lakeside, the staff, the public, the planning commission, and you council members, were well aware that MDE had already awarded permits to Lakeside way back then, when. And that, and that somewhat offhanded reminder, unintentional, not a big deal, but just the reference right up front in the first meeting demonstrates my point, that everybody knew about the permits. No one had any idea or reason to suspect they were illegal, but they were. Really, it seemed that there really was nothing much to consider about Resolution 281. Lakeside was renewing its wastewater discharge permit, and so everyone was just looking at wastewater issues. These falsehoods enabled the applicant to successfully frame 281 to be virtually a pro forma review, and the fact that it had MDE permits earlier, which everyone naturally assumed were legal and valid, explained how they pulled that off. The record, the record shows that except for wastewater issues that were discussed at some length, that is all the review it got. Let's go back to the transcripts, and let me show you how the Resolution 281 was marinated in the common knowledge that Lakeside had gotten MDE permits, which again, must have been approved by the county long ago, which it hadn't. So on permits, it began with Mr. Pack's passing question, the offhand question at the first session-
I'm going to bug you to start with the date again, so we can follow along.
I'm sorry?
Which one are you reading from?
Okay. That, that would have been, I did screenshots into my notes, so I don't have that, but I can remember that, wait a minute. So this would have been December, that was the December 19th, 2019 session, the introduction session, it was very short. At the first planning commission session, this is planning commission, that would be in May 20, 2020, Mr. Showalter was pretty blunt about it. "MDE considers it S1. MDE has issued construction discharge permits for this project before. So if you do nothing, or if the county rejects this amendment, the project will go forward." When capping off his presentation to commissioners, I think that same day, Mr. Showalter emphasized what everyone already knew, the key fact, given that Resolution 281 was all about getting Lakeside reclassified. This is what he said. "MDE has issued construction and discharge permits for this project previously, and MDE believes that this project is essentially S1 today, and that an amendment is not necessary to the county plan. So for those reasons, I would urge you to recommend approval of Resolution 281." Consider how powerful that point is. MDE has issued construction and discharge permits previously. They, they believe an amendment is not even necessary. This really made the whole review pretty much pro forma, didn't it? Later, voicing the same puzzlement many had at the time, and some have to this day, probably tonight, Commissioner Spies asked Mr. Showalter, this is planning commission meeting, this Commissioner Spies asked Mr. Showalter if, as it seemed, the applicant was really sort of doing the county a favor here by going through this Resolution 281 process. Mr. Spies asked what many wondered. "Mr. Spies, well, so it's still your opinion that this process here today is not actually necessary, but it's something that you're going through because it's the proper channels for the county." "Mr. Showalter, that's correct. The record shows that Mr. Spies, other commissioners, and other county, and the county council members all believe that." Other transcript stuff I don't have here. There are other examples as well, where the applicant's attorney made pretty clear to the commission that while it was good to clean all this up with these classification technicalities, by adopting Resolution 281, the project was coming anyway. And what was the proof? The proof was that MDE had already issued construction permits in 2006, and it worked, it corrupted the whole process. It's why some commissioners and some on the council felt they had achieved something when the developer reluctantly agreed to split Lakeside into two phases so the southern part would not be eligible to begin for three to five years rather than right away. It seemed like a big win, but I think we'd been had. So bottom line, MDE permits had been issued, and that was true, but almost no one knew that from the outset, they were improper and invalid. Pretty powerful stuff, and it corrupted completely the issuance of Resolution 281. So the final thing I'll talk about before I ask for a short break is sort of the so-what question. So what if the applicant used falsehoods and misrepresentations to imply that Talbot County had already reviewed and approved Lakeside long ago? That MDE had issued presumably valid permits for the sewer long ago, proving the first point, since permits couldn't have been issued without the county's approval? And as Mr. Showalter assured everyone, they'd do it again. So what if Resolution 281 was portrayed to the planning commission and everyone else that it was just pro forma, relating only to technical issues for the new sewer system? The so-what is that Talbot County citizens, who love this unique place and honestly do cherish our rural character and quality of life, and want the county described, and want the county that's described in our comp plan, and the planning commission, too, who are serious about these issues, the citizens and the planning commission were denied the right to see that Lakeside got the proper review that was needed then, and is still needed now in December 2021. Look at the issues that were not discussed, not even mentioned, in Talbot County's review of Resolution 281, while people were focused on whether a sludge pond should have two feet or three feet of freeboard. Number one, because of the corrupt framing of this matter, there was no discussion at all as to how much money Lakeside is going to cost every Talbot County taxpayer, not just the people in Trap, but everybody wherever they live. Who's going to pay for the schools? Not Mr. Rocks, not the town of Trap. Who's going to pay for the new EMT staff, the county road improvements, all the additional services? Not Rocks Engineering, and not the town of Trap. And you know, don't you, that we have a property tax revenue cap here in this county? Not a tax rate cap, everybody, not a tax rate cap, but a tax revenue cap. So do you know how much money, a billion dollars of new accessible tax base is going to bring to Talbot County? Not a nickel. It's going to be a fiscal mess. Nobody talked about it. Wherever they live, Talbot, Lakeside is going to cost every Talbot County taxpayer a bundle, and nobody talked about it. The council didn't talk about it. Number two, because of the corrupt framing of this matter, no one at the public hearing talked about any of the other following things either, all of which are fundamental to the comp plan. And this is in regard, remember, to the biggest, most impactful, most disruptive project ever proposed in Talbot County. We didn't talk about. Lakeside's impact on our rural character, which is fundamental to the comp plan vision. Lakeside's impact on the quality of life in Talbot County, also fundamental to the comp plan. The traffic, not just the enormous impact of traffic in general, but the state's utter foolishness, in particular, of authorizing a town of 7,000 essentially to straddle the counties and the Delmarva Peninsula's main highway, when the state is planning to spend billions to move traffic faster across the Bay Bridge to speed down to Trap.
Excuse me, can you read that statement again? You said nobody spoke.
Yes. I will read it, and I said that the, the general intro, these are things not discussed in the public hearing and what have you. Traffic, not just the enormous impact in general, but the state's utter foolishness, in particular, of authorizing a town of 7,000 essentially to straddle the counties and Delmarva's main highway, when the state is planning to spend billions to move traffic faster across the Bay Bridge. Never discussed by the planning commission or by you and the council on the record.
Thank you.
How about the multimillion-dollar cloverleaf overpass that will have to be built at Trap? Did you know that there are three spots already drawn up on the town of Trap's comprehensive plan for the cloverleaf? No one talked about it. School capacity and the expense to build a school. Nobody on the record, anyway, breathed a word about that. The risk of creating a new retail hub, which with the town control, with the town controlling the rezoning and enthralled to the big developer, could easily happen. The basic common sense question of whether a- The basic common sense question of whether a single developer is permitted to sextuple the size of a small town without any conditions, just the one-time authorization to the county and the loss then of any control forever after. Whether it's wise to let any developer, Rocks Engineering being just an example, of such a huge dominant project, to operate ever after with only the regulation of one small little town that inevitably will dominate, including, for example, powers of zoning over rezoning and land use. And nobody ever talked about the alternative of encouraging Trap to grow on the west side of Route 50, where in the 2002 Comprehensive Water and Sewer Long Range Plan, there were other properties also designated S2, sizable parcels that would accommodate growth in reasonable chunks and scale. And in fact, had been intended, there were a couple of parcels that were intended, three large tracts, to go ahead of Lakeside, designated as S1 for immediate priority. Those were among the properties you saw up there with the circles that had been downgraded by the applicant's mapping errors unnoticed by anyone. The applicant's falsehoods and corrupt framing of Resolution 281, and this is the point, the applicant's falsehoods and corrupt, this is the so what. These falsehoods corrupted the framing of Resolution 281 and assured that all discussion focused only on technical wastewater issues. And even there, the county was misled, if you recall Dr. Smolyn's report and the photos of the Trap Creek. The applicant's falsehoods concerning the S2 sewer classification and MDE's bogus permits undermined entirely the integrity of our land review process. If in the face of this new information, you, the county council, let stand Resolution 281 and refuse to rescind it without prejudice, you will be driving a stake through any pretense of integrity of our land review process. And this is why I and more than 412 other citizens are calling on you to rescind 281 tomorrow night. And if you permit it, I'd like to take a very short break, after which I will present the proof, put on the table the proof, and we'll see how quickly we can wrap this up.
Chairman, Chair President, can I get a time check, a time check, please?
I don't see what time it is.
It's 6:15, and we've given you two.
Oh, we're not going to take, let me not take a break then, please.
Would five minutes help? Everyone want to take a five-minute break? Is that okay?
I'm sorry?
You can take a five, if you're.
No, if it's going to cut into the time, I can keep going.
Mr. Watson, did you have another water? We have another water for you.
Oh, thank, my wife.
Her hair.
Thank you. So now, to the evidence proving what I say is true. First, I'd like to remind everyone that the material assembled, the arguments I've expressed are set out in detail to that letter, and all that information can be made available. And if after this session, as proof, any individual council member or two members wanted to go over something, I'm happy to do that, I'm available. As to the proofs, I would first like to shine a spotlight on the first and most basic falsehood about the Lakeside Sewer Service Priority Classification. We were told that prior to adopting Resolution 281, Lakeside was classified S2 and had been in that status for 18 years. The title of our Resolution 281 and the text both falsely stated. Talbot County established its Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan when the county council adopted Resolution 281 on October 6, 2002. Technically, that action was a report of the review of an earlier comp plan enacted in 2002. That happened, it was adopted six months before the properties east of Route 50 were optioned by, that had been optioned by Rocks, and other properties were annexed into the town of Trap. Incredibly, it seems that only 18 hard copies of that 2002 Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan were made, and only five were distributed to county officials. Although it has now been amended 55 times, to this day, the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan document is not even accessible on the web. It was put up on the web on September 11th, because I was asking a lot of questions, but at 453 megabytes, really no one can download it. The inaccessibility of the full Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan document may have contributed to the problems with Lakeside, as it inhibited most anyone from looking at the controlling document in its entirety. So we need to look at the 2002 Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan document to understand the sewer priority classification applied to Lakeside 18 years ago, which was the baseline for consideration of Resolution 281. This is actually much simpler than it seems, anyone can follow it. First, only certain parcels of land have any priority classification at all. Most land in Talbot County is not classified, what's called unprogrammed, which says there are no plans in place to connect to sewer. If the county government is willing to authorize sewer for any property, the county shows that parcel by parcel and maps included in its Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan. And if any individual property owner wants sewer, it must come to the county to get the property formally reclassified and remapped. Indeed, that is just what Rocks and the town of Trap did when it presented 281, even though they told Mr. Spies that they really didn't have to. Now, in Talbot County, there are three sewer service priority classifications, called S1, S2, and S3. If you're not mapped in one of those categories, it means the county is simply not planning to extend sewer to your particular property. If and when the county plans to do so, it will remap and reclassify your property and show it on the sewer service area map. In Talbot County, property can be connected to sewer if it is classified S1, which means immediate priority. If you're not S1, no hookup. When a property is classified S2, means that at the time that the classification is made, the county expects, expects that that property will be moved up to S1 in three to five years, and presumably then developed and hooked up to sewer. I emphasize expects because Maryland law and the language of the Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan itself is very clear. The fact that the property is expected or programmed to be moved up to S1 at a certain time is not self-operative. And as an aside, anyone listening from the state, in MDE's statewide system, which has six categories rather than Talbot's three, S1 and S2 categories are both immediately priority and can be developed. MDE knows that, but maybe someone got confused about it 20 years ago, who knows? So to know about Lakeside's status, we must simply look at the maps in the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Chapter pertaining to Trap, which are found in Chapter 2, pages 43 to 47. Fortunately, I have here one of the 18 copies of the Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan, I think that were ever printed. And as you can see in these plans, the maps are blown up and much bigger, easier to read. The documents, incidentally, the documents I saw in MDE files from 2004 from PIA agreements had copies of these maps, photocopied in black and white, absolutely unreadable. Can we put up the next slide, please? Hope I got the right one. All right, let's keep going. Next. Okay, the next one? Okay, here we are, sorry. Okay. So this slide is in your packet at 7B. The Trap section of the County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan starts with some very brief narrative of the existing sewer service system as it existed at that time. The key item I will call your attention to is this figure 23, which is up on the screen. As you see, its label describes exactly what it is. Town of Trap, label's over here, right there, can't read it here. The Town of Trap Sewer Service Area. The dark gray are areas, as the legend clearly shows, that are the properties that as of October of 2002 were classified S1. This dark gray. Immediate priority, meaning they were already hooked up or they were entitled to be hooked up. And bright orange are the areas that the legend says are S2. It's hard to see this on the slide, but that's orange. Yeah, that one's orange, and I think another one over there. That S2 is what Lakeside claimed it was classified, meaning that in October of 2002, the county expected that in three to five years, those parcels might be moved up to S1 and so on. And if so, then they could be connected and developed. And brown, and there's only a little of it on the very top and the very bottom right, are the few parcels classified in the legend S3, meaning that in October 2002, the county expected those properties would be moved up towards development and eligibility in six to 10 years. And that's it. That is the status of the Trap Sewer Service Area in October of 2002. With one exception, having nothing to do with Lakeside at all, Talbot County made no change to the Sewer Service Area classifications or maps from that date until adoption of Resolution 281 in August 2020. Now, if you look at figure 23, look at your copy of this figure 23. At the land on the east side of Route 50, the land comprising Lakeside, as we all see, that's this land right here, all that. As we all see, that land is white. Not gray, not orange, not brown, but white. That means that when the Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan was adopted, Lakeside, like most of the land in Talbot County, was given no sewer service classification by Talbot County. It was what everyone called unprogrammed. It's a cornfield, it has always been unprogrammed. It was unprogrammed when it was adopted in 2002, as this map shows, and it was unprogrammed on August the 10th, 2020. But when the applicant presented Resolution 281 to the council on December 17th, 2019, and throughout 2020, and as it was being evaluated by everyone, it was misrepresented to have long ago been reclassified S2, programmed for development in three to five years. Mrs. Moran said so every time she read the legislation. And the false claim that Lakeside was classified S2 did not originate in 2019, but started back around 2004 when Rocks and the town of Trap began pursuing permits from MDE. It probably contributed to the permit falsehood also. So how did this claim originate, that Lakeside was S2? Here's another map you will find. So how did, next slide, I'm sorry, Mrs. Moran. So how did this claim originate, that it was S2? Here's the other map, you've seen it before. That of Trap, and this is the map, figure 24, called the Long Range Planning Sewer Service Map. And it's just what it says, a long-range plan. Now, some really simple, banal analogies will illustrate the point. Let's just say you're asked to describe yourself, and you say, "I'm a single man, but I have a long-range plan to get married." Or you're asked to describe your residency and say, "I live in Talbot County, and I have a long-range plan to move to California." Where you describe your profession, you say, "I'm an auto mechanic, but I have a long-range plan to become a brain surgeon." In each case, the first part describes your current condition, followed by something that describes your expectation for the future at the time that you answered the question. Expectation or not, you are not married till you find a partner, get a license, and say, "I do." You're not a resident in California till you pack your stuff and move, and you won't be permitted to operate until you go to med school and a lot more. And in expressing an expectation, you did not commit yourself to it. In each case, a specific action is needed to move from one status to the other. As to sewer service classifications, the one and only legal way to actually change classification is if the Talbot County Council adopts a resolution amending the Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan, which can only be done if the planning commission has found that the proposed proposal is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan, which can only be done after commissioners hear comments at a public hearing and considers the full gamut of elements of the Comprehensive Plan, not just one. So the only remaining question is whether the sewer service classification for Lakeside property was ever changed subsequent to its adoption in October 2002. And the answer is, it did not. The law is very clear and well-practiced. To obtain any priority classification at all, to move up from one to the X, the county council, and only the county council, must expressly authorize that step by amending the plan. The classification cannot be changed by action of a municipality or by interpretation by MDE, interpretation by MDE, or any other manner. And the passage of time does not do it. That is, even if Lakeside had been classified S2 for development in three to five years, which it was not, the passage of five years would not have transformed Lakeside to S1 status. Once, in 2004, the town tried to get the council to reclassify Lakeside from its unprogrammed status to S1, and the council, Talbot County Council, turned them down flat. That story I'll relate shortly as part of the timeline on the falsehood number two. So when presenting R281, the applicant, with their experienced lawyers and engineers who are expert in land use matters, consistently ignored figure 23, the true sewer service map, and instead misrepresented that figure 24 described the sewer service priority classification of the Lakeside property. That falsehood was repeated each time the resolution was read at every meeting, and you heard it repeated a time and again in the transcripts. It was untrue. There are many other ways to corroborate that figure 23 is the right one. An obvious example is the one other time, some properties in Trap, properties totally unrelated to Lakeside, were reclassified. These were the little strip of residences in the southeast section of Old Trap, this little piece right down there. If you look at the slide, on figure 24, the lots are shown in gray as S1, eligible for connection. Figure 24 says S1, they're eligible for connection. But in March of 2018, the town of Trap presented a request to the county, Resolution 259, to reclassify them S1 from category S3. Obviously, if figure 24 was the relevant document, that would have been unnecessary. But if you look at figures 23, they are classified S3 and do need to be reclassified, and that's what happened. Finally, I want to report that among other knowledgeable people who've recently reviewed this proposition I'm making, Mike Pullen, the former county attorney for 20 years, who, which included the period from 2002 Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan was adopted, agrees that this is the correct analysis, what I'm saying here. And you have a copy of Mr. Pullen's email confirming that in your package at Exhibit 7C. So now let's move to the issuance of the invalid permits in 2006. In 2005 and 2006, MDE issued a discharge permit and two construction permits to Lakeside for this billion-dollar deal. The permits were invalid because, number one, MDE cannot issue construction permits to extend sewer facilities to property whose sewer service priority classification is not immediate priority, meaning S1 in Talbot County. In the state, S1 or 2, but in Talbot County, S1, and MDE knows that. As we just saw, not only was Lakeside never classified S1 by Talbot County, it was never even classified S2 for development in three to five years. Until Resolution 281 was adopted under false pretenses, it had always been unprogrammed. Number two, the Maryland code gives counties, not towns, authority to amend water and sewage plans, but only after a finding by the planning commission. The code says this. "Before a county governing body may adopt a county plan or a revision or amendment to the county plan, the county planning agency shall certify that the plan, revision, or amendment is consistent with the county comp plan." The code then provides, 9507, that a The code then provides, 9507, that a county governing body, that is, the county council, submits the proposal to MDE for approval. Lakeside was never classified S1 by a comp plan amendment, as we've proved earlier. And in addition to that, no amendment to the Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan pertaining to the Lakeside project was ever found consistent with the county Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan by the Planning Commission before 2020. It was never adopted by the council before 2020, and it was never sent to MDE before 2020, and yet they issued the permits. I do not know exactly how that happened, exactly who said exactly what to whom, but there are some documents that I was able to uncover, which shed light and demonstrate the need for Secretary Grumbles to initiate an investigation with MDE, or that other authorities do. Here's the story, as I've been able to piece it together, but I'm not an investigator, and I don't have the resources needed to really get to the bottom of every little detail. I have a lot of documents, some I'm presenting. If you want more, I have more that you might want to see. Lakeside saga began in July of 2021, the month in which Rocks optioned 800 acres of farmland. These were option agreements, and Rocks Engineering did not settle on and buy any of the land until 2007, after Rocks and the town had successfully gotten the MDE to issue the illegal permits I'm describing. Soon, based on discussions with Rocks, the town proposed to annex 925 acres of farmland across from Trap, which was the land Rocks had optioned, plus some other parcels. And that proposal, the simple annexation, was reviewed by the Talbot County Planning Commission, who found it consistent, the annexation, consistent with the county's comp plan. And that was because Trap, as a town, had long been designated as a growth area, with the overarching idea being to cluster new development near towns where infrastructure existed. However, the Lakeside project was not part of the Planning Commission's consideration. Indeed, in the Star Democrat article reporting the Planning Commission's decision, the town's attorney, Mr. Thompson, told the Star Democrat that no development proposals had been presented yet, and, quote, "That we are not interested in obtaining development proposals yet." So that Planning Commission meeting, which was held January 3rd, 2003, and this was the one and only Planning Commission meeting at which land that is, where Lakeside is situated, and it concerned other land also, was ever specifically discussed until 2020, when Resolution When the Planning Commission met at that meeting, annexation of the property, in fact, had not even been scheduled to go to referendum. Rocks had not even laid out the substantial inducements he was offering to the Town of Trap's voters, and the annexation wasn't approved and completed until May of that year, about six months after the Planning Commission met. But Rocks and the town got started with their plans, and in December of 2003, submitted an application to Dr. Tian at MDE's Water and Science Division, seeking a discharge permit for essentially the same new spray irrigation plant we see today. The documents in your packet, documents are in your package I obtained via PIA request, show some of the internal exchanges at MDE, which concluded with a Mr. Anderson pointing out an item on a chart on Page 2-43 of the 2002 Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan, a sufficient reason to process the discharge application, checking a box on a form that said the application was consistent with the county Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan. And he did that after Mr. Tian asked him, quote, "Was that enough?" While the chart entry indeed referred cryptically to a large plant, it stands alone with nothing more. That is, no explanation as to its location, its properties to be served, the phasing, the relationship to existing facilities, or anything else. That was it. And of course, it had nothing to do with Sewer Service Priority classifications of any parcel of land. Within weeks, as word got out, a Mr. Hoon, an attorney in Chestertown, acting on behalf of some Talbot citizens, wrote a letter to MDE with numerous exhibits, all of which are in your packet, blowing the whistle. He said, "We believe that certain incomplete information provided to MDE has caused MDE to make an erroneous determination that the Trap East area and the Trap East facility have been properly included in the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan." Referring to Rocks' engineer for Lakeside, Mr. Hoon noted this, and this is a quote, "Mr. Rao's enclosures do not include all of the relevant pages of the county Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan, in particular, Chapter 2, Page 45, and Figure 23." He went on to fully explain the same falsehood that I've described here, and he pointed out that none of the property was classified S1, and he called for an investigation. This was in December of 2004. And here's an interesting episode. In July of 2004, the secretary of MDE, not some functionary, wrote the Town of Trap to say, "MDE had reviewed the application and was prepared to publish a tentative approval once the appropriate water and sewer, water and sewer plan classifications are in place." That means, once the property was classified S1. So in the summer of 2004, MDE knew that the Lakeside property was not S1 and needed to be reclassified. In response, on August the 12th, the assistant town's attorney, the town, assistant town attorney, wrote Secretary Philbrick a three-page letter to convince MDE that Section 9511 does not exist, saying, "It does not appear that any state law, regulation, or guideline currently requires an amendment of the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan for the processing of this groundwater discharge permit application." And also, on the following page, conflated, seemed to be conflating S2 and the Maryland classification system, which is immediate priority, with S2 in the Talbot County system, which is not. So that is, that could be the source of part of the falsehood, who knows? In any event, the following month, in September of 2004, the town finally did petition the county to reclassify Rocks' property as S1, immediate priority for development of sewer lines. It was a non-starter. Several public hearings were scheduled, this is in 2004, were scheduled, and the town pitched the county council hard. But the council, there are pictures on the wall, right out there, Tom Duncan, Phil Foster, Hope Harrington, Hillary Spence, and Peter Carroll, the council was, were having none of it. They were so certain, as most of us are today, that authorizing a single subdivision of 2,500 homes and a half a million feet of commercial space across Route 50 from the tiny town of Trap, with traffic problems, school issues, and so on, was out of the question, and in no way compatible with our Comprehensive Plan. The fact that 15 years has passed doesn't change that.
Mr. Watson, real quick, has there been, until this council did something in 2020, between 2004, which you just spoke of, and then, was there ever a time when the developer came and asked us to amend the Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan for this approval?
No, ma'am.
Thank you.
Several public hearings were, here's the point, the county council was so sure they were not having any part of it, they did not even send the town's amendment request for reclassification to the Planning Commission for its recommendation. It was clearly their power alone. The council rejected the request by a five-to-nothing vote, and they had the county attorney, Mr. Pullen, prepare an unusual 21-page findings of fact documenting some of its objectives. The rejection was big news in Trap in Talbot County, and one of the Star Democrat articles announcing it's in your packet. In 2005, the town, in 2005, Ms. Price, to your question, the town sued the county, essentially to try to force the county to reconsider the matter, and it went to the Maryland Court of Appeals. The council's rejection of Lakeside stood. Now, I have no proof about the next statement, but I have to say, I believe there is no possibility that the people at MDE, who are dealing with Lakeside, were unaware of this. Certainly, the county's, council's adamant rejection of Resolution 2 of 123. And yet, five months later, it issued a discharge permit. In 2006, MDE issued two construction permits, which certainly were not related to that little chart on Page 43 at all. None of this was proper. Documents at Exhibits 15 and 16 in your packet hint at what was going on, and as do other documents I recently obtained from PIA requests. Some MDE internal emails from 2004 era were uncovered by journalists at the Center for Public Integrity, and are quoted in an astonishing article they published in 2009 that everyone should read. It's Exhibit 3 in your packet. An example of what is reported in that article, quote, "In May of 2005, a Maryland Department of Planning official wrote an email to an MDE official, expressing concerns about the town's effort to bypass the county's process for approving changes," referring, referred to as amendments to its Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan. Quote, "How can you and we act on an amendment that has not been locally adopted? What's up with that?" All these are but hints of what went on, and demonstrate why an investigation is needed. Because 15 years later, those permits, those false MDE permits, were used to build the story that corrupted Talbot County's land use approval process, so R281 could launch Lakeside. Only after they had the illegally issued permits in hand, did Rocks Engineering close on the purchase of the Trap properties. Another item in your packet, this is, is documentation regarding the scandal that became public in the spring of 2009, when it was discovered that the Town of Trap had applied to MDE to obtain $21 million from Obama's American Reinvestment and Recovery Act, that's the AARA, to pay for the wastewater treatment plant that Rocks was supposed to build at Rocks' expense. The town claimed the project had all the needed permits and was shovel-ready. What's truly shocking to me is that MDE formally placed this proposal at the top of the state's list, number one, and was clearly set to grant taxpayer funds to the project to build the Lakeside plant that Rocks was supposed to pay for. And Rocks would have received $1.8 million in cash for the spray irrigation field. When the story broke, the town, who was intimately wrapped up in all this, was immediately backed down. As far as I know, there was never any investigation into this outrageous arrangement that almost happened, and there were only a couple of articles about it. Also in 2009, Talbot Preservation Alliance, Tom Alsbach, learned of the issuance of the invalid construction permits, and had to send in a Public Information Act request to MDE to get some background. All of this is in your packet at 15. Mr. Alsbach investigated, recognized the improprieties in the issuance of the permits, and took action. On behalf of TPA, he wrote MDE Secretary Wilson, reporting on the irregularities, and asking for an formal investigation, saying this, "As a result of Trap's procurement of construction permits for a sewer project that is not consistent with the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan, the entire process for Comprehensive Water and Sewer Planning in Talbot County has been rendered meaningless." That statement is as true today as it was 12 years ago. Meanwhile, the Talbot County, Talbot County also heard about construction permits, and it too joined in asking for an investigation. That is, the county council asked for an investigation. It's in your packet at 15. What happened next is really remarkable, and I think an important element in what anybody would call a scandal. So investigation from MDE has been asked for. Six months went by with no action from MDE. Suddenly, on February the 3rd, 2010, and out of the blue, the Town of Trap sends a letter to MDE and also the county, announcing that they have abandoned any intention of building any new wastewater treatment plant on the east side of Route 50. And accordingly, they were surrendering their two construction permits, the ones that had been issued in 2006. Instead of a new plant, and get this, they would send all of their sewage from Lakeside to the existing Trap plant. I'm not making this up, the two letters are Exhibit 17A, Exhibit 17B. So on February 16th, this is cause and effect, on February 16th, at Secretary Wilson's request, an MDE official wrote Mr. Alsbach, this is Exhibit 18, reporting that they have begun, they had begun an investigation, but now that the town has abandoned its plans and surrendered the permits, that, quote, "It made it unnecessary for MDE to take any action." Conveniently, the investigation was aborted, and no one at MDE had to explain anything, and no one at Talbot County learned anything more about what had happened at the Lakeside permits. It appears those permits, which we now know were improper, were never mentioned again in Talbot County until the opening minutes of the introduction of Resolution 281, almost a decade later. We just, we read that. At that point, as you saw in the transcripts, the permits had become the lens through which we all evaluated the most important disruptive incompatible development project ever proposed in Talbot County.
Mr. Watson, I just want to make sure, I'll check you down.
Okay, I got 10 minutes. I assume there's going to be a hard stop from your comment. There are important things here, and it's unfortunate. Thank you for your, that was appropriate, and I appreciate it. I will send to all the council members, highlighting things that I did not mention here, because a lot of it's interesting you'd like to know.
Mr. Watson, one question. I want to make sure I heard it right. The Town of Trap wanted $21 million for the developer, is that what you said?
The application was made by the Town of Trap. Not that the Town of Trap was going to give the money, I don't, first of all, what I know about this is what I read in the papers, literally. But not that they were going to give the money to Rocks Engineering, but that they, the Town of Trap, would be building the plant using that money. That would relieve Mr. Rocks, you don't, two people don't have to build it. Mr. Rocks would be relieved of that obligation. Apparently, the Town of Trap would hand him a check for $1.8 million to take title to the spray field.
Can I ask one other simple question? And if we ask a couple of questions, certainly I would think we'd give him a couple of extra minutes, but I do have a question. If MDE did, in fact, issue the permits without county council approval, shouldn't they be the ones that need to go back, and then, again, different administration, different secretaries, different employees, and all of that, so it's not necessarily a reflection on who's there now? But if they issued these permits without the Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan and approval coming from us, shouldn't they be the ones who rescind this whole permit?
Those permits, Ms. Price, are no longer have any relevance, except the fact that they existed in the past.
Correct, but they're still building now.
If Resolution 281, nothing's done, Rocks will get a, we got multiple permits, will get a new discharge permit, actually not new, they're talking about it as a renewal.
Correct.
Let me finish.
But that's my question, exactly. That's my question, exactly. If, it can't be a renewal, if the permit was issued improperly, let's give it that, if it was improperly issued, then you can't renew something improperly issued. So shouldn't this truly be this information? I'm not saying that we're not listening and all of that, but ultimately, this is MDE, who needs to fix this mess?
Ms. Price, with due respect, first of all, I agree with you entirely, which is why, on December 1st, I sent the Secretary Grumbles, Mr. Curry, and a bunch of other people at MDE, and the Attorney General's Office, and EPA, all this information with a request for a formal investigation and a revocation of their approval of 281. They don't write, and of course, the permits are, if they're illegal, they're illegal, and were illegal ad minicio from the beginning. So that, of course, is correct.
Could we have a copy of those letters that you wrote, when you're done?
It was sent to you on December the 1st.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Moran delivered it on December 1st. She confirmed to me that she- She confirmed to me that she sent it to each of you individually, as well as putting it in the, in the packet.
Okay.
Let me say, however, that while it is true that those, the illegal permits were an MDE issue, Ms. Price, Resolution 281 is not an MDE permit. Resolution 281 and the, and the improper amendment of the Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan is a Talbot County land-ish, land use matter. And it's, the responsibility for that lies with the county council, and cannot be, that responsibility is a heavy burden that is on, on your desk. Back on the clock, I guess? Okay? All right, so here's a key question. How could this have happened? Okay? First, I am sure many are thinking, some in this room, that Watson has lost it. None of this can be true, because how could something this bizarre ever have happened? It's, sounds preposterous on its face, I know. But think about it. Lakeside's been around here for twenty years. Most regular citizens are busy and just don't have, just don't follow the details anyway. All they know is Lakeside and the old sign. But what about the professionals? Well, how many, so that's the question. Well, how many planning commissioners have come and gone over twenty years? I think we've had five planning commissioners since Lakeside started. Kehoe, someone whose name I've forgotten, Sandy Coiman, Ms. Verteri, and now Mr. Salinas. As to the county attorney, Mr. Pullen left five years ago, and Mr. Cooper Smith left just after passage of Resolution 281, interestingly, to go to work for Mr. Showalter's firm. And Mr. Thomas wasn't around when any of this history was happening. And what about the county council? We've had four elections, four turnovers, since Lakeside was conceived. No one, no council member here knows the roots of this story and this experience. I am confident that the great majority, not all, but the great majority of what I've said to you here tonight is new. So, compounding things, the legal research of land use review processes can be pretty technical and subtle, hard to follow. Almost every one of us, from county councilmen, to planning commissioners, to laymen like me, only learn these things through word of mouth over a long period of time. Understandably, everyone relies on what others, who are more experienced and knowledgeable, tell us, like lawyers and engineers who have our trust. There is not one lawyer in the council, there's not one lawyer on the court, county council, or the planning commission, you know that. The only person I know in the county operation here, who, other than the county attorney, who happens to be a lawyer, is Bill Anderson, who heads the Public Works Advisory Board. So, as a consequence of all this, virtually everything that any of us know about the history of Lakeside and the long saga of its approval process is what Rox's agents told us. Time and again, it was they who were called up, invited up, to explain everything. It's in the transcripts. And there was never a word, word of pushback. It's all right there in the transcripts. So, that brings us to who did know the whole long story when Resolution 281 was presented and at every discussion, knew it had never been S2, and knew that the application, that the permits were tainted. It was the applicant, in particular Rox Engineering, and the Rox, and Rox's professional consultants who were there all along, who were active participants every step of the way over twenty years. And we all know, as discussed at the outset, falsehoods can arise in a million ways, including simple mistakes, confusion, and correct inferences. I have no idea how it happened. This is really important, but I can't go beyond what I can say here. But once those falsehoods are in existence, they can be perpetuated on and on forever. It's my own opinion that the biggest insult is, is not that Rox and the town knowingly or otherwise misled the opponents of Lakeside, but the applicant misled its supporters as well, those of, on the council and anyone else of that view. For surely, this information that I'm laying out here is all new to you, as it is new to the planning commissioners and to everyone else. Did you know that, that Lakeside was never S2? Did you know that they switched out Figure 24 from Figure 23 and framing it up? Did you know the change, canary involved in the MDE permits, that they were invalid and how the, the applicant had gotten the investigation back in 2010 dropped? No, the answer's got to be no. Anyone who knew those things and stood by silently as Resolution 281 was presented, considered, and adopted would have been complicit in all this, and as culpable as the applicant. And I don't believe it ever happened. So, is not, is not the worst of it that supporters were also among those who were victimized. So, let's face it, we've all been had. I have a section here that, because of the passage of time, I'm not going to speak to, but is very important, having to do with the council's power to act. And this is what Ms. Price made a remark at a recent meeting, oh my gosh, we have two opinions, what are we to do? That needs to be resolved, and not just for you and the council, but Mr. Thomas, who's not here tonight, expressed an opinion without any, any citations or certifications or legal reasoning, just a conclusory opinion. And he expressed it not only to you all in the county, at the county council, in executive session in private. It was expressed to the entire body politic, to the planning commission, to the Public Works Advisory Board, to me, to every person who watched or is interested in this. And, and that's appropriate, because the county attorney's obligations are not to the county council, does not work for the county council. He's the county attorney for Talbot County, Maryland. Analogous to, to the Attorney General of the United States, is not the president's attorney. For that reason, he has a duty and responsibility to all of us.
Who is that?
The county attorney.
The county attorney has a duty and responsibility to work for all of the citizens of the county? Is that what you're?
He works for Talbot County, comma, Maryland. The last time that came up is when I was told that I had sued the wrong party, because I had sued the Talbot County Council in my petition. And it took a month to, to reapply, so that I sued Talbot County, Maryland, and had to go back. And those responsibilities, Mr. DeVio, which I, which I'm sure the attorney here would acknowledge, are those responsibilities go beyond reporting to and being, and having duties only to the county council. They are, they extend beyond that. And because that county, that pub, that legal opinion was voiced publicly to all of us, and appropriately so, we are as entitled as you are to know the full opinion. So, if there were, if, to the extent, and I certainly hope, that you have asked the county council, in the context of the Gallagher opinion, and with or without it, to provide a full legal opinion in writing, with citations and legal reasoning laid out there, because you would be derelict if you didn't, didn't do that. To the extent that has been done, and should have been done, we are entitled to understand that also. And we are not your adversaries. You know, the Talbot County Council ought not be perceiving citizens as the opposing We're your constituents, we're all in this together. We, we are not only do, is it fair that we understand it, but I believe we're entitled to that information. And I hereby make the request, as, hereby make, make the request. Let's see. So, if you can just give me about three minutes, I think I'm, I think I'm done. And this is the question of, but the horse has left the barn. So, this is the third point that everybody knows about, but we tap dance around. Today is December the thirteenth, and even though they're a long way from their permits on the new plant, Rox has been building just as fast as they can since the morning of July fifteenth. It's amazing. Apparently, following the old saw, that it's easier to beg forgiveness than get permission. And, well, that works sometimes, but when you make that decision to beg forgiveness rather than ask permission, you're taking risks and you know it. So, because of the hundred-and-eighty-degree turn slipped in in the amended Exhibit F, Rox can now connect Lakeside to the existing plant right now, no matter what happens to the permits for the new spray, spray irrigation plant. That is, if the Talbot, if the county council, MDE, ignore the planning commission's decision on November third, which they shouldn't. Rox has already laid the pipe to connect, so I guess they're, they're banking on nobody stopping them. Now, Ms. Price, I know you're working on legislation to somehow mitigate the problems with the La Trap Creek and the existing plant. And you're drawn to the idea of compromise, which is usually a right idea. But given the history of falsehood you've heard tonight, and the fact that the compromise is sort of between the Rox family and 15,000 families who live here in Talbot, I feel, feel that particular proposal would be more like telling someone who was pickpocketed that he should compromise and just ask for a few dollar bills back. What I don't understand is why people assume that construction at Lakeside can't be stopped. If that's the right thing to do, and it is, and for, for good reasons, if not these, what? It can be stopped. It's not complicated. The land isn't going to go anywhere. Work stops. Maryland law says that vesting rights, that is, Rox can say, well, it's too late, I'm already vested. That's for him to say, not for us to judge. Maryland law says that vesting requires that a party proceeding in reliance on something must have done so in good faith, in good faith. Tonight's revelations should address that point, along with Exhibit 24 in, in your, your package. So, good faith and clean hands is another principle. And as far as the, will there be litigation? The lawyers will get busy, no question about it. Talbot County has legal insurance. It's exactly why you have, we have legal insurance, is something unexpected comes up, and it might be expensive, but we have, we are part of a legal insurance group, and it is covered. So, in the fullest of time, things would get straightened out. And that project, Lakeside won't die, but that project, altered in scale, or altered in pace, or conditioned in some fashion, will get resurrected, and it will exist in Talbot County, but in a better form. And with all this attention to their plight and the problems that have happened, it sure is my hope that the 340 families down there in Trap, who've been struggling with this sort of in the dark for, alone for so long, will also get some, some attention. And here is, here's the question. What is the cost to Talbot County of not acting, of not rescinding 281, knowing what you know now, none of which you knew in August of 2020? What's, what's the cost of not acting? Of taking no action to rescind, of saying to Rox and the town of Trap, well, you got away with that one. The ship sailed, the horse is already out of the barn, which it wasn't in May. That's just one of those things. The costs are incalculable. It's a cost of Talbot County's integrity, and we can't afford it. The blue part on my draft here is where I stopped, because I wanted to, I wanted to get what to say about the implications of doing nothing, the implications to Talbot County, the developers, the people who live here, to the staff, to the kids, if the kids understood this. And maybe there are some young adults who pay attention. What's the implication? If you're, if you're a, a big, a big player, you don't have to play by the rules. You know, a lady and her husband, you know, down in Cordova or something, come to the planning, the, the, the planning department with, you know, do they have to pay attention to encroachments and building right? And, you know, there's a staff's heart really in it, when, when what the hell? If, if it's a billion-dollar project, and you, and you just go, go with it, and, oh, I got an idea, just go ahead and do it, and then nobody will do anything. You know, let's, we got trees on the side of a, on the side of the river that we're, that we're not supposed to cut down? What the hell? Cut them down, we'll, we'll see if, nobody's going to say anything after all. Look, look at Rox Engineering. They, they, they shouldn't have had, been able to get, get along with it, but they, but they, they can't. It just, I mean, I couldn't write it up, because it, you know, your head explodes. It is, it is my, I'll pass these things, you know what we all, we reviewed tonight? I'm talking all about this integrity issue, the falsehoods, it's fundamental, it's why there is no question about this. Remember the other three things? The Trap, the existing Trap plant is crazy. The mapping problem is a legal problem that it, it, it just needs to be revoked and, and set aside. And Ms. Price, you can't defer it to MDE. This Resolution 281 matters having to do with land use, or the responsibility of Talbot County. They are the responsibility of Talbot County. And I'm, I'm sure you regret it often, but the, you five individuals, bless you for your time and your work, but you, you carry a hell of a burden, and one of your burdens is to decide what you're going to do about this. And I think the only conceivable thing is to rescind Resolution 281, with or without saying what, which reason, because of the maps. But to rescind it, the work will stop, we will, it will take a little while, we will, we will all reconvene when the dust is settled, and we, we as a community, as a community, planning commission front and center, will reassess that project properly, not through the lens of these falsehoods, but taking into account all the issues that are part and parcel of evaluating a, a project. And with that, I want to, I'm dead serious, I want to thank you for your time, and especially thank you for your attention. Thanks.
Mr. Watson, we appreciate it.
I, I have one question.
Sure.
You're hitting on honor and integrity and claiming, claiming it. If, if there are falsehoods that you led the community to believe by accident, how would you correct those? And have you ever in the past corrected a spy article if you put out information that wasn't correct?
Well, first of all, let's start with this. Were I to...
It's simple, just, would you print a retraction? And if you brought something up tonight that was incorrect, that you later found out, how would you like that to be corrected?
Well, I'll, I'm taking, you'll, you'll pause while I think about how, how best to answer this. First of all, should it be brought to my attention that I had made an error? And who among us is perfect? I promise you that something I said here tonight is wrong. How can it be? How can a man, how can any man, Mr. DeVio, sit here for two hours with this much?
By checking and verifying your information before you do it publicly.
Mr. DeVio, I, someone sent me the email that you sent them, expressing the view that I'm the least credible man in Talbot County. And I can only tell you that I'm, I do my best to get my facts straight. And should I have made a mistake, and it is quite possible, not certain, but quite possible, first thing I would do is take a good look at it and acknowledge and agree that if that's a mistake. Gee, I thought X, and I was wrong, it was Y. Happens all the time.
Thank you.
Ask my wife.
Yeah, I, I would like to say something very briefly. First of all, Mr. Watson, thank you. I mean, the, the amount of time and effort that you put into gathering all this information, all the documents must have been somewhat exhaustive on your part. So, I just want to first thank you for the time and effort that you put into it. I know, I feel that your heart is in the right place, let me say that. And, and you're right, no, no man is infallible, and we all make mistakes. You know, I was around in 2006, 2005, and, and I do remember the, the public uproar over those permits being issued. I remember talking with persons like Mr. Alspeck and Mr. Bowman and the late Mike Sullivan about, about those permits. So, I, I do remember the discussion amongst members of the community about how MDE... So I, I do remember the discussion amongst members of the community about how MDE issued those permits without them being incorporated into the con, the town, the county comprehensive water and sewer plan. So I was around, and I do remember that. Regarding the action on November 3rd of the planning commission, I will certainly talk to our legal staff, whether or not that has any bearing, as you do know, during your research, and I'll speak with Patrick when he gets back in, or speak with Chip. 281 has already been incorporated into the comprehensive water and sewer plan. Our county attorney, your county attorney, has said publicly, there's no, there is no way to unring that bell. It's already done.
Yes.
So I don't know what November 3rd even did, my, in my thought, I've been scratching my head trying to figure out what they did in taking that vote, because 281 is already incorporated into the comprehensive water and sewer plan. The only thing this body could do, from what I understand again, and I'll go back and talk to my county staff, is to amend the comprehensive water and sewer plan itself, itself, because it's already been adopted by MDE, which you know. So, but that, I'm not asking for your, for a question, I'm just, just making a general statement as far as what transpired this evening. So I'll, I'll look into all of that and find out, you know, what if anything November 3rd did or did not do, if council were to have the mind to amend the comprehensive water and sewer plan. We would have to sit down with Mr. Clark and county staff and figure out a way to do that. You do raise some very interesting points, and some of the things that, again, I remember 10-plus years ago, these same things being raised. So you do bring back to memory a lot of that discussion back in those '06, '05, that I remember hearing amongst various members of the, of the community regarding some of the things happen, happening down in Trap. As you know, resolutions can be changed, they can be amended, as you do know. And you're right, there was a change in how the affluent was going to be handled by the town of Trap. So that was done, and, but you do raise some interesting points, I will give you credit for that, some very interesting points. Thank you.
Well, thank you for that acknowledgement. The?
I, I, I need to excuse.
Yeah, I just want to just make a statement of that. Thank you.
Right, I think we're just kind of giving our wrap-up here, Mr. Watson. And all I'll say is that, I think, agree with Mr. Pack, that the amendment to a comprehensive water and sewer plan is the vehicle. I don't think rescission of the resolution is, we've said that for six months. So maybe tomorrow's resolution is, to amend the comprehensive water and sewer plan is correct, maybe it needs to be a different resolution to amend the comprehensive water and sewer plan, but that's what needs to be done. So whether I start the ball rolling tomorrow with the one that we have, and at least hear that out publicly and get feedback on that, whether we also introduce another one based on the information that you provided tonight, I thank you very much. There is a lot of other information and documented things that, that we were not aware of, that I don't think anybody probably in this room was aware of, and certainly we need to take that under consideration. Might not stop the process of what's getting introduced tomorrow, but that doesn't mean that something else can't be introduced in another couple of weeks, just keep kind of all the balls in the air.
Could I say just one short thing? Very, a moment. It is true, as I said to Mr. Thomas before, that a, an amendment to the comprehensive water and sewer plan appears that it would have the same effect as rescission of 281, could. But here's the, here's the central issue that, that I would urge you to talk to a lawyer about. An amendment now is a new thing that happens when that's passed. And if you remember, I discussed or mentioned vesting with Rox Engineering, had it already started. I believe the, the argument that that party would have vis-à-vis an amendment, okay, is, the argument would be, it doesn't pertain to me, because it's too late, you know, it didn't come up. Whereas rescission dates back to May the 7th, and the issues of vesting are altogether different, having to do, I'm, I'm not, I'm not even a lawyer, but, but I would urge you to explore that carefully with the attorney.
Well, yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Plus, you made a very good point about good faith.
Thank you. Thank you. Motion to adjourn. Thank you. Yeah. Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. Thank you. Yeah. Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. Thank you. Yeah. Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. Thank you. Yeah. Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Plus, you made a very good point about good faith.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Plus, you made a very good point about good faith.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Plus, you made a very good point about good faith.
Thank you. 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 Thank you.